On Monday, June 28th, 2021. And this is a special session of the Board of Health. And we are here to discuss the preliminary 2022 budget request. This meeting is being held telephonically as we are still adhering to COVID protocols. But excited to start talking about our transition back. Perhaps in July or. I am Greg Thomas, Board President. Would the other Board members please introduce themselves?
This is Brooke Harrison, Board Member.
This is Morgan McMillan, Board Member.
Good evening. Who would like to do the? I don't know if we needed staff introductions. I know we have a lot of the managers or directors. Because this is a study session, so it might be good to just kind of run through that list.
President Thomas, this is Camille. I can start by introducing obviously myself. I'm Camille Rodriguez, your Executive Director. And I am joined here in the office with two leaders and I'll have them start. Ms. Nolan, go ahead.
Lexi Nolan, Deputy Director of Boulder County Public Health.
Hi, Kelly Hinch, Interim Strategic Initiative Branch Director. And I can start reading through the other folks as well from public health. So there's Marcy Campbell. From the Strategic Initiatives Branch, Heather Crete from Community Health, Melissa Golden from Administration, Carol Helwig from Community Disease, Jo Malinowski from Environmental Health, Rita Mag- Magnon, right? Yep, from Admin. And that's it. And Maria, sorry Maria. Oh, sorry, Marielle. Yes, she's actually the star of the show. So it's like introducing everybody except that. So yes, Marielle Bado from Finance Admin.
Okay, well, thank you for the introductions. And without any further ado, why don't we dive into the agenda? Which is really just discussing the 2022 Recommended Boulder County Public Health Budget. So Marielle, I assume you're leading this?
I am, and I'll start sharing. The first document that you guys are going to see, you should have received it, is one of the board packets. And I'm just going to go briefly through it since everybody has access and if there are any questions that I can address. So this is just a communication that this is our action number one for 2022 as our budget. I noticed here things shifted on timeframe. So we did kind of give you a background on why the shifting so early and also a few items as to what is going to be represented in the budget and also what is going to change in the flexibility that the 2022 budget will have. Does any of the Board members have any questions on this document? Or can I move over to the presentation where I will be providing more details on some of the background information in this document? I'll take that as, okay.
I'm good with the presentation.
Did I hear a question?
No, it's okay.
No questions.
Oh, sorry. All right. And Camille will do a quick introduction of the budget and how we're starting and then I will take over.
Thank you, Marielle, and thank you Board of Health and all of the staff in attendance tonight. It's my pleasure to bring to you our 2022 Recommended Budget Presentation. I hope that we can answer all of your questions. I have also encouraged staff that if we are unable to, we will certainly do the research that it takes to get the Board, to get you, the Board, the answers that you need. In all, Marielle is going to go through this presentation and I will also participate. But we just hope that it starts the conversation for you to sort of get a recap of what 2021 brought us and what we're looking forward to planning for in 2022. I think that it's a time of recovery and we know that there are lots of funding opportunities out there as well, including the American Rescue Plan Act dollars. We have not signified those inside the budget that we are recommending to you, but we will touch upon those a bit if need be. And so there, I'm just setting the table for Marielle to be the star of tonight and to share with you some finer details about our recommended budget for 2022. Marielle, on to you.
Thank you, Camille. The next slide is going to be our agenda. As Camille said, we got the introduction. We'll look at the new budget schedules and then Camille will talk a little bit about the funding priorities. And I also have really high level highlights of our impacts. And then we'll get to the great details over 2022 budget. So the budget timeline. As I mentioned earlier, this shifted compared to last year. And the reason for the shift is that the county wanted to get all the work, all the study sessions, all the heavy lifting earlier during the summer. So that, you know, in December, budget staff in the county is now trying to struggle to, you know, compile the data internal that it also, you know, provide staff that work in the budget office the ability to take more holidays and also to, if we need to address anything else, we can address it earlier on instead of pushing it to the back. So what this means for us is basically that instead of coming to you guys later in the fall, we're coming in July to present to you the study session. And then we have a quick turnaround of July because the county does want us to request our base personnel budget to them on August 13. So that's our first deadline, which is for me, it's not that far away. The other highlight dates to keep in mind is September 17, which is the budget requests are due completely to the budget, to the budget office. In October 26, Boulder, the public hearing for recommended budget for the county will be held. And as of December 8, the county will make the resolution for the approved Boulder County budget. So those are some of the reasons to shifting how we bring study sessions and budget approvals to the Board. But or unfunded budget requests and or adopted amended are still within February and March timelines. So that's the whole story behind our new timeline for 2022 budgets and going forward. The next slide is for Camille to give you a little glimpse of our priorities.
Thank you, Marielle. So, you know, I'm coming in to serve the Board of Health and Boulder County Public Health at a time when even throughout the country, we're shifting from sort of an emergency response to recovery. And so COVID and any of those lingering effects and then how COVID has changed our lives for the significant future has been a part of our discussions in planning this recommended budget for 2022. We also, you know, have not forgotten our other priorities that at times, perhaps because of the pandemic, didn't seem like they were at the forefront, but have always been. This recommended budget maintains a focus on health equity and the priorities related to our own goals and objectives internally, as well as with our community partners. Mental health and behavioral health is also continues to be priorities for us at Boulder County Public Health and will be reflected in our 2022 budget. Climate change as well is definitely a priority for us and you will see that in our recommendations. Universal home visitations has been a big part of the discussion since I arrived and will continue to be a priority as we also place back at the forefront our ability to connect with the people we serve and support in person. And especially as we continue to promote vaccinations and continued mitigation strategies to prevent the spread of COVID in our community. Near and dear to my heart, child health and development will be reflected in this budget as we look to our staff internally as well as as we connect with our partners. And I should say that planning in general, I love that staff wanted the strategic plan reset. On this slide, I think it's time for us to take a deep breath. And as we all recover, as we take our, you know, time off and take care of ourselves and come back into the office, we need to look at how is our strategic plan currently aligning with our new priorities? How can we dust off any of those priorities that perhaps during the pandemic did not receive the attention needed because the pandemic obviously took our resources and time and focus? Some of that includes planning for our health needs assessments and health improvement plans. That's definitely part of our strategic planning. All of that continues to be a reset for us. And all in that, we cannot forget that we are asking staff to make plans to transition back into the office, that they are taking time to do recovery priorities and that we haven't forgotten the gratitude that we have for staff's efforts all throughout the pandemic. And especially as we ask them to shift and change the way that they are doing their work in light of these transition activities. So in short, this budget recommendation reflects all of those and more. It's so difficult to explain, as you know more than I, all that Boulder County Public Health does in one slide. It's hard to reflect all of their priorities in one small speech. But certainly what Marielle is going to go over in the rest of the slides. We hope that if you have questions on something that seemed to be a priority that I didn't touch on, that's probably because we have so many staff doing wonderful things that I couldn't possibly cover it all in one slide. So as Marielle goes through this, please do ask questions. Or if you'd like to hold your question till the end, I think she and I and the rest of the team would be very willing to work to answer your questions about our strategic priorities for 2022 and how they are reflected in the recommended budget. Marielle?
Yeah. All right, moving now to the fun stuff, right? All right, so this slide is something that we brought last year and I think it was very meaningful to give you some of the impacts of consideration that we could have. There are two items in this list that are from last year, but I wanted to bring them in because it's something that didn't actually end up happening or ended up happening that, you know, affected our budget or where we stand. The first one is ELC. ELC is the Epidemiology Levatory Grant that we received. And they had originally told us that we weren't going to receive all of the funding till 2022, which would put the BCPH budget very tight because we would have to cover those expenses with our general fund. On the positive note is that CDPH went back and reset the way that we receive payments. So that was decided that, I think, starting in March, all expenses would be reimbursed based on the month. So if we spent $200,000, they would reimburse us $200,000 instead of the monthly payment that they had us across the, I think, 36 or 26 months. So that's actually helped us a lot. With that said, the other important item was that BCPH was able to receive $2.8 million from County Cares, which provided and helped the BCPH maintain that healthy reserve. So that's actually something that helped maintain and stabilize the BCPH budget for 2021 and 2022 going forward. Item number three is that the UVR process would be the same as 2021. Basically, it would be a one-time project, no FTEs. And that once 2021 financials closes, leadership would be able to make that decision. So that UVR process will stay the same as last year. Item number four and item number five are estimated. The county has not basically approved the COLA in the merit increase. But HR has suggested that it's more than likely that we would maintain the 1.6 COLA in the 1% salary that we did last year. So I just put these as pending items, but more than likely will hold true. Item number six is one item that we had on our last budget approval. And it was that the county was going to recoup all the general fund vacancies. So this would decrease BCPH ability to have additional funds. And to update the Board of Health, this was canceled by the county. There were quite a few issues trying to reconcile how that process was actually going to work. So in our favor, the county decided not to take away vacancy savings from us. But that doesn't mean it won't happen in a future year. And then item number seven is that many grants continue to receive flat funding or few losses. But strangely enough, in 2021, BCPH received, I'm going to say, three grants that we were originally denied. And the agency came back and said, would you take this money? Would you be able to do it? And mostly because other agencies did not have the capacity to, you know, do the grant or other issues. So strangely enough, we did get three grants that we were originally denied. So those were our impacts for consideration.
Morgan, do you have a question?
I do. Thank you, Marielle, for going through this. I have a quick question about the COLA and salary increases. Did that happen for BCPH employees last year? I remember there was a conversation that there was a budget freeze. And I'm just wondering whether or not that was ever reinstated for BCPH staff last year or not.
Okay. So there was a freeze where the county said zero merit and COLA. And then there was the concern that if we didn't do it one year, we were going to be behind by a big lens compared to where staff needed. So the county decided to provide the COLA in the salary because it was a huge impact for our staff.
I'm so glad to hear that. Thank you.
You're welcome. So revenue and expenses. So this is what it currently looks like. So as you can see, most programs are very close to the revenue versus expenditures. The Special Projects column is basically anything that is kind of our priorities that are not designated to any of the programs like COVID is in our Special Projects. Or health equity and our mental health is also part in our Special Projects. So that's why, you know, it's hard to delineate, but in here, you, we have all the work for all those three projects mainly. The only difference is that let's see, I don't know in here. Our reserve funding is still pretty healthy due to us getting the cares money and being able to receive a few grants that had allowed us to save some of our general fund. And then we have immunization and ELC epidemiology funds. So this is what 2020 is expected to look like. And when I say expected is like, you know, I mentioned before, we have a few pending items like the ARPA request that was stated in the document that we are pending approval. So if that gets approved, you know, our revenues and our expenses might look a little bit different. And we also have a few grants that are coming down the pipe, but we don't know the date. We don't know the specific funding. And that's why we will probably recommend an amendment to this budget sometime in December or early 2022 to address all those things that we know they're coming, but we are uncertain on what they look like. So this is just for awareness of what the future of the 2022 budget that we need a little bit of flexibility that is going to change depending on how much money we work, we get from our requests and how much money we get on additional grants that we are aware of. The other part is that we are hiring a grant specialist and this person will focus on bringing additional funding sources to BCPH. Which would help tremendously. I doubt that this person will be able to come in like in the next two months and make all those changes. But when we are in 22 and we start seeing those changes, you'll have the ability to see those increases in revenues and expenses because we've added additional stuff to support steady funding. Any questions on this slide or is everybody ready for me to move to the next one?
Hey, Marielle, I see your reserve funding is 4%. And on the slide previous, you had 9% last year?
Yes, we, I basically distribute that reserve into some of our special projects. So we're using all, well, not all, but most of our reserve to to basically cover some of those fundings that are not covered in or ARPA requests. They're not covering our ELC. They're not covering our immunization. So that number does look smaller there because I plugged them somewhere else. So we can have that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And the next slide is basically a representation of the graph before. It just provides you a lot more detail of where those graphs are. And it also provides you the historical detail, like, you know, back in 2018, we had a $16 million budget versus 2024, 2022, which we almost have a $25 million budget and potentially bigger once we receive all the additional additional funding from ARPA. A few of the highlights is that I made comments on the right-hand side where you could see, for example, in the county, we're getting an increase in funds and mostly has to do with we've had, because of the new Colorado Pay Act, Equal Pay, Equal Work Act, we've had to had a few salary revisions of where people should be at every time somebody new comes in. So the, some people have been reclassified and that has increased our county funding. So that's part of our, our increase in county. And then you have the county tax, which is a Sustainability Tax Act. And this one is higher this year because the Environmental Health Office is requesting additional funding from the county for this. Other ones that are big major is basically the state and the federal. And those have increased exponentially because we are receiving a lot of COVID funding. We're getting a lot of immunization funding and there've been a few grants that we were denied that actually came through. So those are major increases on our state and federal funding. We've had a few private grants that have come through. So that has come nicely to some of our programs. So the overall revenues really comes from our state and federal that, you know, we are increasing our capacity at that level. On the expenses sides, I think, as you can see, the personnel took a huge increase. And it's mainly because we are hiring quite a few staff to help support and maintain the COVID response and recovery. Our operating, as you can see, it's a little bit lower. But the reason why this comes through is because in 2021, we had a lot of expenditures that were at one time. Like, you know, office things that we needed to set up employees' offices or things like that where now we don't have that type of expense that exponentially jumped or we have grants that are covering some of those operating expenses. So that was a decrease due to that. The other one that kind of decreased is our professional and it's quite a significant is because BCPH is working on transitioning some of those contracted staff to becoming temporary FTE positions in BCPH. And the main reason for that is because it would save additional or it would save BCPH money for us to be able to continue the work for longer. So you can see that decrease there where we're hoping to save all that so we can increase our personnel FTE in BCPH and decrease the cost of our contract. So those are kind of like the significant line items in this, which are reflected on the graph below. Any questions on this section?
Yeah, this is Brooke. I had a quick question. I'm a little bit confused between the professional and the personal line items. So you had mentioned that the personnel, a lot of that increase was due to COVID-19 response and recovery.
Yes.
Are those permanent employees or is this something that we expect to then decrease after the recovery programs? So it was like, say, in 2022, would we expect this to go down? And then you had mentioned, okay, go ahead, sorry.
So you're right, and there's more. So the professional is anything like contracted work or if we contract with a Gemini group or if we contract with anybody providing mental health. And in the professional, the contracted staffing is part of that line. So that's why you see that decrease. And when I say personnel increase is because they're not becoming permanent BCPH employees, but they're becoming temporary BCPH employees, which, you know, it could be a year or two years. But we're trying to shift them from that professional line so we can save money on the contract fees, like, you know, we pay an administration fee. So we're trying to save some of those fees that we pay in the contract to be able to maintain some of the, you know, COVID personnel for a longer period of time. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions on this slide? Okay, I don't see any hands up. And this is basically a clean version of that huge spreadsheet below or before this. And this really tells you what percentage of funding comes from where. So obviously, the county is pretty, is one of our highest, followed by the state and then the feds. So these are just basically some of the, a graph representing our funding, where they're coming from and how much of our BCPH budget is covered by each one of them. So this is just a quick representation of where the money is coming from and how much is covered by the specific funding. So is there anything that you'd like me to look in here? I don't see any questions. And the next slide is basically the And the next slide is basically the same but for expenditures. So this is just representing um how much of our revenue is being spent on. So eighty two percent of our categories is, you know, salaries and benefits. And where we pay property and other services and how much of our budget it's operating. So this is a quick representation of the slide with all the numbers and just giving you a sense of. How much we're spending and where we're spending it. I don't see any questions, so I'm going to move over to the F T E on slide. So this is our twenty twenty two F T E changes and it's going to look a little funky. But I have a few details to provide you. So and and when. When I say F T E means that, you know, their their F T term or um. Full time permanent employee, so anybody that is hourly or is contracted does not get represented. In this chart, so that's one thing to keep in mind. Um, admin didn't really have an increase in F T E, we did have a few. Empty positions that we filled, but we weren't um adding more in twenty twenty two, we are adding. Support, but we're hoping to do all that contracted or hourly, so our F T wouldn't necessarily increase. These special projects, um, we had originally expected that we were going to. Hire sixty five people, B C P H employees, but what ended up happening was that we did a lot of contracted staff. And that's why you see that decrease of fifty one. Because when we want, we went out to um look for. Basically, emergency response epidemiologists. Case investigators, we thought we were going to. Hire them ourselves through B C P H and what we ended up doing was using Insight Global. To provide some of those resources and as I mentioned before, we're trying to shift. Some of those inside global or contracted staff to become B C P H term employees. And that would allow us to have savings to have the ability to keep the employees for a longer term. Um, I think this fourteen number changed, I think I counted today and we have up to seventeen. And the reason why we cannot move or shift everybody that is in contracted terms. Is that we only have the ability to shift people that kind of live in Colorado and that can be physically here. We do have a few contracted staff that live in other states and um due to the Colorado. Fair pay for work that that has not been possible uh due to some constraints, so. Uh, but we are shifting those people that, you know, work within Boulder County vicinity. The strategic initiatives um branch did not have any changes, they stayed the same. Uh, environmental health did have a few changes. Um, just like last year, pace moved, this year the county decided to move a few. Other employees out of environmental health and shifted them to Oscar. And there was also a position in environmental health that was not refilled. Due to the um unable to have the funding to fill it and it just shifted to. A person in house that just took additional um. Increase in F T E or hours, so that was the change there. Um, community health did have a few increases and this was mostly due to. The grants that were received that required additional staff, so these three new changes are grant funded. And community health was probably. The program that received the all three grants that that came to surprise that were originally denied. And then we received them in twenty twenty one. Communicable disease, their staffing changed to one. They do have an additional um a grant that allowed them to hire one more person. So that is reflected here. Family health has been stable and I think they're in good shape and there's no changes. Uh, for this year or the future. Um, so that's kind of the overview of the F T E changes. What this could also mean is that if our ARPA request gets approved. Um, these F T Es will potentially increase if we hire them internally instead of contracted services. So you would see quite a big bump from one fifty five to a higher number. Um, based on our ARPA request approval. Any questions on F T E changes? I see a, but I don't know who it is, Kelly.
Yeah, it's it's us, Mario, just just to be clear. Um, that we do have a number of additional staff in communicable disease in the epidemiology program that aren't reflected here. Um, yeah, as that are part of the COVID response.
Yes. Is there another question?
So, this is great, so the special projects F T E. That's really was, is it really F T E or is it the? The people who are the the contractors, it is includes the contractors, right?
Yes, so the special projects is anybody that basically hired for COVID. That we were originally expected sixty five, but in twenty twenty two, we're expecting some of that contracted staff. To ship shift over to a F T E role, which is this fourteen um F T E number.
Okay. All right, and then there will be probably additional people that remain on contract that are not reflected here.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any more questions. Okay.
Actually, I do have a question for Joe. So the environmental health position that was not filled and was kind of reallocated, what was that program?
Good evening, this is Joe Melanowski, Environmental Health Division Manager. I I'm thinking that has, that must be the job that Stephanie Martz, Stephanie Fontanini took. In the water quality program, she was our, she was one of our administrative staff. And actually applied for the position and received it.
Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Stephanie, I see your hand up.
Yes, thanks. Um, I just beginner question, just trying to make sure I understand the numbers here. Are when somebody's a halftime F T E? Are you combining those to make?
Yes, so so the so that's part of it, so the way it works is that. When I create the worksheet, it just has like point seven, point five, so it just adds up a number. So that doesn't mean you have twenty eight people, but it accounts for twenty eight F T Es. So that might also clarify some of the question is that you might have thirty staff. But among those thirty five, um, you have only twenty eight full F T Es, which. Which could mean three people at point five and then the other at, you know, full time. So yes, that's how that number comes about.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So the next slide is just to show you where we are with our twenty twenty two budget. And this just shows you the historical data of where we've been and where we're projecting to be. Now, this is, this is where we're projecting to be at a eight point nine rounded to nine percent reserve balance. Um, we're also have many, are, well, we have the ARPA request and a few other grants. Or fundings that are coming through that might give us the ability to have more. So this is going to change as we receive more funding to see where we're currently are. So this is just as an awareness. That this will change as we receive additional funding. Um, from ARPA, from the few grants that we know about. Um. I think that's kind of like just this, the purpose of this slide is to tell us you where we've been historically. As you can see in the in the past few years, we've never been as healthy as we are today. And it talks to the volumes of how much support. We've gotten from the county and all the additional funding that we're receiving. From COVID that has been giving us the ability to use some of the grant funds to cover. Some of the funds that we were expecting to cover with our general fund, so. That's kind of like the biggest thing. The other thing that I would like to mention is that B C P H is required to maintain. A five percent balance, uh, fund balance or reserve, so we can never go below the five percent. Um, so this just gives you kind of a sense that, you know, in prior years. We've never been lucky enough to have the flexibility that we have today. And one thing I'd like to remind the board in this slide. Uh, is that I talked about earlier about the the county giving the one point six COLA and the one percent merit. And that. That takes into account, you know, if the county decides to get. Two percent instead of one percent in or. Colet that will affect our reserve balance because we would have to pay out of. Or reserve to cover those employees that are not covered by the general fund, so that will affect. Or reserve balance if the county chooses to have a higher COLA in merit. Um, currently, we don't have a a definitive action. To that, but just for awareness that that will impact or reserve. Um, based on what the county decides. And that if the county decides not to give a merit or COLA increase. B C P H is unable to give one because we have to follow the county, so just for awareness as well. Um, we, B C P H will be allowed to do like a kind of like a year mid-year merit if the county does not choose to do a merit and a COLA. But that would be up to B C P H to decide if the county says no. And if our reserve is healthy enough, so just for awareness on this slide. I don't see any questions, so I'm going to move to the next slide. The next slide just basically represents what I've been talking about. Is 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 just, you know, where we are, what are committed fund balances? Um, I don't know if you guys remember last year or committed um emergency preparedness was two hundred thousand dollars. And you guys increased it to five hundred thousand dollars because. If we have another emergency response like we've had today, two hundred dollar, two hundred thousand dollars wouldn't be even enough to cover much. So the board in B C P H um worked on getting that increase to five hundred thousand dollars. Um. A few other numbers that you hear um seeing here is basically what we're estimating to roll over from twenty twenty to twenty one. Um, and then a few other things that, you know, compose. Um, like the restricted, what what are restricted funds? And then at the bottom, you'll see where we are, where our budget is. What two months or for re of expenses for B C P H means in our current um. Percentage of reserves, so this is just kind of like a high overview. And actually some numbers of how we got to where we got. Um, so I don't know if anybody has questions. Looks like they're not. And the next slide is gonna talk you, talk to you or it's gonna show you where we are. As to the reserves, so this slide actually represents. How much money we can spend from our research and still maintain the five percent. Um, reserve balance that we need, so we can spend up to nine hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty two. And still be able to maintain a required five percent reserve balance. So this is just kind of showing you like, you know, maybe want to be conservative, we only want to do four hundred. So this is just showing you what we can do and where we would be if we decide to spend certain amount of dollars. Um, so this is just to provide you kind of like where we would be if we decide certain things. Does anybody have questions on the purpose or these numbers? No hands. And like Camille said.
Thank you, Mario.
Our last one is any questions or any clarifications that the board might have for me or Camille or. The leadership team since they're present.
I had a question on the previous slide. So these increase in expenditures, that's the increase over what is budgeted? So say there was an emergency, okay, just wanted to make sure, thank you.
And and for example, this comes handy when we're doing our U V Rs, which is our unfunded budget requests. So um, pr- program managers have the ability once a year to come to leadership and say. Hey, I need this project, I need fifty thousand dollars. So then, you know, if if the entire management group comes and says. We have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of a budget funded request, then. We know that if we approved all the unfunded budget requests, we still have enough money. To cover anything that is additional like an emergency or something that that happens mid-year, so that is the idea of representing. These numbers here to provide the board and the leadership the ability to see how much can I spend?
Got it, thank you. And one other question, I know that there's the five percent minimum reserve, is there a cap on reserves?
Not that I'm aware of, the only, the only um major thing is that we cannot go below five percent. Um, but I would say that the county would not be very happy that we. Keep, you know, stashing if if we're asking them to fund stuff and and we're not contributing.
Exactly, okay, thank you.
Can you go back two slides, Mario?
Yes.
So the two point two million on the next slide is the starting fund balance, which is. Uh, it's the first box under the total fund balance, right?
Correct.
And is that what you project at the end of twenty twenty one?
Yes, this is what we would have to go into twenty twenty two.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome. I don't see.
I guess this is just maybe kind of more of a. You know, I was thinking about this as I was reviewing the packet and thinking about all of the unknowns. That we still have ahead of us, uh, which are probably more good unknowns than bad unknowns. Um, oh wait, that's taking me back to a time when I I don't, I I want to forget it. Um, anyway, so I guess my my thought is is that it really shouldn't probably cause us too much stress. In June for this buddy session. Uh, or the July board meeting where we approve the the tentative budget. Because we could rack our brains a million different ways and it's probably still not going to pan out the way that we're thinking, right? So, um, yeah, I I would just say that it probably, we don't have to be scrutinizing, I think, right now. Um, because we know there are probably some upsides coming.
Yes, we are standby, um, we know all these things are coming. And like you said, it's it's going to look probably much different uh in December or early January when. This comes back to the board because by then. We will for sure know if ARPA will be approved. And then by then we'll probably have those additional fundings for immunization and per capita. That will be coming down to B C P H at one point uh late in the summer.
When are the ARPA requests due to the county?
Tonight, uh, actually Lexi is currently typing away on her submission. Uh, so.
And will we have a sense of that at the July twelfth meeting? Will I have a sense of what was submitted, we won't know what's as would be an approved.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you what we're gonna submit, it's a pro, it's approximately, it's an ask of approximately five point eight million. Um, to fund um the priority areas for public health in addition to. Um, child health and development, um, some funding to uh. Compensate for some spaces where we lost revenues last year. Um, and. Um, and uh um some additional pass-through funds for food insecurity, um things like that, but it it totals about five point eight million. The commissioners will be meeting on July fourteenth to review the proposal and we're hoping to have some feedback from them um by the end of July.
Yeah.
Great.
And I think it's fair to add also that this is our first ask, right? So we'll be looking at a second ask probably later in this year as well to build on recovery. So it'd probably be smaller than this, but um we will be doing another ask later on in the year as well.
And that'll be following our strategic planning process.
And um what is uh the county total that they have coming from ARPA?
Sixty-four million.
Okay. Go big or go home. That's why I like you guys.
So that's my entire presentation unless you guys have additional questions or do you want me to do something or add additional stuff?
No, I think this is all pretty understandable. I think most of us have been through. I have seen most of the tools. I I really love the way you present them. Um, I appreciate the fund balance, uh the additional detail on fund balance. It's always a uh, you know, area of interest for the board. Um, and yeah, I'm I'm excited for you guys both through, you know, regular budgeting and and I I guess, you know, this is something to probably worry about at a later date, but thinking about twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four, you know, are we, are we still gonna be business as usual once all the grant funds expire and the temporary staff, uh assuming that, you know, they they're they're done when the funding is done? I'd just be curious to know if there's any headwinds on the long term. I I don't know. I know that you usually, sometimes we would get a county presentation of here's what their budget is looking like. And I know that um property values and assessments, I think this is the two-year cycle that factors into the next year's budget. Uh, I know valuations are way up, so I don't know if that's a really good thing for the county or if that's a really bad thing for the county.
It's a good thing. This is Camille. Um, an increase in valuation is always good for the county, um which will in turn be good for us um in the longer term. Um, the other thing about, I love how you're thinking about twenty-three and twenty-four in relation to ARPA because um I know that you have, we, um, and I would say the county has that many years to utilize the ARPA funds, if not even a little farther. The the Treasury Department has released, you know, guidance or is in the process of releasing guidance. But the, the instructions um to to local governments have been that, you know, um even if you have a project in flux when ARPA is expiring, as long as it's booked, you're going to be good to spend it. So it allows for really intentional planning on our part. And it allows us to even, if we need to shift priorities um relative to what our community might need from us in twenty-three and twenty-four. So that's always good news for us in planning as well.
Yeah, I just wanna add also that, just to be aware that our strategic plan is wrapping up over that time period. And so we are gonna be looking at building, we're gonna do a community health assessment, the um public health improvement process. And so we are gonna be looking back and evaluating the planned cycle we're in now. And then we're gonna be jumping into bringing that cycle, what's gonna look like the next four to five years also. And so um how those play together insofar as how we want to reuse some of those ARPA funding or, you know, build on some of the foundation that we're that, that we're constructing now, right? So how do we build on some of those pieces? I think will end, um will be really critical going forward and what the community has to say around that will help inform our decisions.
Brooke or Morgan, any last thoughts?
I think my only last question is, so it looks like most of the increases over twenty twenty-one are in relation to COVID. Is that correct? Or were there any other big increases for other specific programs?
The increases were mainly COVID, just because um the communicable disease had a huge increase on staffing. We did have a few increases on uh grants that we've received that that require us to hire additional staff. But I would say, you know, most or vast majority were all COVID related.
Got it. So yeah, mostly COVID or or grant mandated. Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to say thanks, Mario, for all your work and helping for this meeting and thanks for the whole staff.
Thank you.
How, how long have you been here now, Mario? About two years or a little over?
I haven't even been here a year and a half.
Well, awesome job. Thank you very much. I know there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes there. Uh, also wanna give kudos to Lexi. I know we've done it before, Lexi, but uh you, you got us through a really difficult time. And um, you know, I I don't think we could ever express our appreciation enough.
Thank you.
Okay, well, there's no action to be taken by the board tonight, so uh we will look forward to July twelfth. Uh Rita, if you wouldn't mind, um and or Camille, um I know I saw that message that Jorge will be going off of the board. I'm not sure whether that's effective. I just wanna make sure we have our quorum for July twelfth, since we need to take an action then. Um, I think he doesn't expire until August, uh so hopefully he's still in the mix, but if not, um we probably will have the other four. Just wanna, I know a summer vacation and rest and recuperation. Um, I will be here and not on vacation at that time, so I will be there.
Yeah, and I already let Rita know, this is Brooke. I will not be there on on July twelfth.
Morgan, do you have sense for your plans? Oh, Morgan might have left. Okay.
Uh Greg, this is Camille. We, we, Rita and I can um pull the membership and uh we'll get back with you um to confirm or or to regroup if in fact
Okay.
we won't have a quorum. Thank you.
That sounds good.
Good.
Okay, everybody. Uh, great work. We'll talk to you in a few weeks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Steph, too. Thank you.